It appears that both of these... Where is, I didn't see it on here, do y'all... Where is Tapia Construction? Do you know where they are?
I don't know. Fred Morgan was the one that got in touch with them.
Okay.
That's all I know about them.
Okay. Well, mid Tennessee running-
Everybody knows who Randy is.
Yeah. Yeah, he's got a fancy name here, but we know who, yeah.
I sure hear a lot of good things about his work.
I have as well.
Ask him otherwise.
Randy Kevin works for Sullivan.
Yeah. Alright, got a motion in second, further discussion? Anybody? Alright, we're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries?
Okay. Do you all want to get in touch with Randy to meet over here with him?
Um, well, somebody will need to. I'll probably need to tell Bob and let Bob explain to him what we need.
Bob Morgan?
Bob Morgan.
Okay.
I'll try to in the morning. My plan is to be here in the morning, but-
I'm sure he takes care of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
My plan is to be here in the morning, but I'm getting to that age where I'm just happy to have another morning. Alright, that takes care of that.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Well, thank y'all for doing that and please express our appreciation to the, to the club, to the organization.
There's a good bunch of people and we're always looking for senior citizens, so we find them easy. We have a good time.
Okay. Okay, well, we probably got, probably got a couple around this table that are eligible. Me and Hal, I guess.
I wouldn't know who that'd be.
I don't know who that'd be either.
There's a lot of y'all now, but this is me.
I don't know who that'd be.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Y'all be careful now. Alright, uh, the other thing I had is we were going to have a guest tonight, I believe, to speak to us about the new business on the square? Okay, that's y'all. I've never met you before, so I was-
We get to meet if they ask, Mayor. I'm excited.
Is there one in town somewhere? I want to meet him too. Come on up and tell us. We've had some questions, let this be upfront, will you? We've had some questions about what you're doing. Maybe some things have been rumors, maybe they haven't, we don't know, but we'd like for you to tell us what you're doing and then if you don't mind, we'll ask questions or open for questions. So, you got it?
Can we talk about our family first? Do you guys mind?
Sure.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about our family. So, we moved to the States in 92.
Okay.
And we have a couple businesses in Nashville.
Okay.
I've actually wanted to move to Watertown since I was 21 because I always thought it was country and I love it here.
Good.
Uh, we're very family oriented.
Okay.
And that's all I have to say about that. And my brother's gonna answer all your questions. I'm gonna go sit down.
Okay, well, thank you for-
Very nice to meet you guys.
Now, tell me your, your names, I guess.
I'm Asha Soll.
Okay. Y'all, y'all got that? Y'all got the names? Okay. Alright, floor is yours.
So, uh, we decided, I think, like, maybe a year ago when my sister, well, maybe my sister moved here about two years ago, I think.
Okay.
And, uh, I would always drive by and think, hey, all these people are driving to London to get, uh, all their products, like, smoke products and, and some of these shops have them, but they don't really have a big selection like that. So, I used to always drive by the square, leave her house, and, man, maybe it'd be nice to have a, have something here for everyone, you know? Kind of easy, easy access. I guess it was supply and demand.
Okay.
And even, uh, even my, uh, I think it was my other sister that drove one day from here to London. It was on like, uh, wanna say Thanksgiving, maybe? She had to drive all the way down there and then come all the way back. So, I guess a 20-minute drive there and back. And we just thought it'd be a good idea. I mean, uh, we're not here to, uh, cause any trouble or hurt anyone or I know some people are thinking that we're gonna sell to minors and but I have three kids of my own, you know, my niece goes to the high school. Like, I don't think that, uh, I didn't think that it would be a problem or cause some kind of turmoil with people. But I didn't think that it was an issue. I didn't even know that I had to speak with someone before, like-
Well, I don't know that you had to, to be honest with you. Uh, as long as, you know, as long as you're legal, but, but sometimes in a, in a small town, things take on a life of their own. And it's best to, what Barney used to say, Andy, Andy Griffith, nip it in the bud. Sometimes it's best to do that.
Oh, yeah, I understand. I understand. My parents are from a small village, dude. No one likes with somebody, some new dude, hey, who, who does this guy come here? Thinking he can do whatever he wants. I understand.
What's, what's the name of your business?
It's a Watertown Smoke Shop.
Okay, so there was a rumor that got out it was gonna be something else?
Yeah, it was never intended to be Watertown High.
Okay.
Ever intended to be Watertown High.
Yeah.
I don't know how that rumor got out. I don't know, I don't know where the rumor came from, but it was never intended to be Watertown High. I don't, I, I don't even think that would be a good idea, like, from the high school.
It, it wouldn't be.
No, I don't think so.
It wouldn't be.
No way. I think, I, I, I think that would put the wrong, uh, the wrong image on it. Like, all you wanna do is get people high, but really that's not what it is.
Okay.
I mean, there, there's a bunch of elderly people from the town that are coming saying, oh, I got back pain and I got nerve pain and I need some CBD or I need something, I can't sleep at night. And it's really helping them. Uh, I can't really name them because I've only met them once, but there, there's, there's a bunch of people coming in saying that they need it.
Well, let me cut to the chase here. Is anything, is everything you're selling illegal? Could you sell it anywhere else in Tennessee?
Yeah, 100%.
Okay.
100%. There's one product that is being banned on, uh, April 1st.
Mm-hmm.
And we have like, maybe five of those and we're about to get rid of them.
Okay.
I, I just heard of that today.
Okay. I want to ask you-
THCO is actually being banned on April 1st. I don't know if anyone's familiar with THCO, but it's a, it's a synthetic, it's a synthetic cannabis.
Okay.
It's actually being banned by DEA federally on April 1st. You're not supposed to have it anymore.
Okay.
So, we're gonna go ahead and get rid of it now.
Are you subject to inspection by any state or federal authorities?
No.
Okay. Long ask question, kinda related, but not. You said y'all moved from the, to the States. Where did you move from?
In a national, too.
From Greece.
From Greece? Okay.
Yeah, from Iraq originally.
We're from northern Iraq originally.
Alright.
And we are Catholic. I just want to make that clear. I've been called Indian, I've been called Muslim, I've been called Indian in the book. And that's not where we are. We are Catholic, so, and I don't look like I'm Indian, so-
What you are is your business. Okay?
Uh, Mayor, I appreciate that, sir.
Yeah, and I'm just curious, when you said we moved to the States, so-
I would love to.
Okay. Hi Laura. This is, tell me your name again.
Asha.
Talking about the smoke shop. So, now's the time for folks to ask questions.
Are you selling any kind of vaping?
Yes, sir. We sell, uh, we sell disposable vapes. We sell, uh, we sell, uh, juice and mics and all accessories that you need to vape.
When we say, when we say vape, you're talking about these things?
Yeah, vape.
Substitute for cigarettes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, there's some people coming in and saying, hey, this helps me quit smoking cigarettes. So, some people it helps them, some people they, they start smoking and then they, then they treat it just like a cigarette. It's, I, I guess it's just a preference.
It's, it's, the way I understand it's considered more dangerous than cigarettes. That's, uh, that's, that's what you're hearing all the time on the news and so on.
Yeah, I think that, uh-
So, I just don't want to get into the, uh, youth, the kids.
Right, right. No, for sure, for sure.
They go and drive by, so they are using it.
I mean, I've seen them walk by and as soon as they see the sign in, in front of the door that says must be treated-
They need a big sign up so they can, they can understand they don't buy it.
I mean, if you guys allow it, I'll, I'll, I'll put as big as you want. You let me know how big you want it and I'll stick it wherever you want me to.
We was, I, I, for one, I just don't want it to give to the kids.
Obviously.
The vape, uh, if the adults won't do it, that's their problem, but, uh, I don't want it to give to the kids.
I just want you to notice that the people be like being everybody, nobody's gonna just walk in and run out like being people.
Of course you gotta be, of, of course you have to be 21 and older to get it. But, but the kids are, I feel like the kids are getting it now from these, from these little shops over here. These little stores that are over here. I, I, I don't know who owns those stores. I'm not saying anything about the owners or anything bad about the owners. Because, I mean, I feel like kids get, so when I was a kid, okay, I probably started smoking when I was about 14 years old. I wasn't supposed to smoke when I was 14, but I seen my dad having and my uncle smoked and my, my cousin smoked and my older brother smoked and everyone smoked.
And he got it.
I went and found a way to go do it anyway. So, it's kinda like, uh, it's kinda like one of those things that, I mean, we can control what we do, you know? For 100% sure, we can control what we do. We have like a scanner on our phone that scans IDs and makes sure that they're okay and it tells us their age and everything. We're actually working on getting a scanner that we can like put the ID through to make sure that it's not fake, to make sure that people that come in. But most of the people that come in, but we haven't really had any, anyone that's, that's, that's under, uh, 21 came in so far.
What's your hours of operation?
Uh, we work from 9 to 8, but now we're 10 to 8 Monday, Tuesday, Saturday, and, uh, Sunday 10 to 6. Uh, we're just trying to get a feel of, of what we need to do. You know, it's only been two weeks that we've been open. Well, like a week and a half, so we're just trying to get a feel on what days we should be open or what hours or we're just trying to feel everything out or what, like, what sells more for this market, for this area, like we're just basically figuring everything out right now. Or if, if the business is even gonna do good, which I really think that it will do good. But, uh, uh, we're just basically trying to figure everything out right now.
We're here to stay, by the way, guys. We need doughnuts shops and stuff like that.
Uh, something I saw that I felt like was, uh, people asked, and I saw on Facebook, do you guys sell bongs?
Uh, yes, sir.
So, I think, like you said, the vapes and stuff, that's kind of like, I feel like this day and age is cigarettes in a way. But I think everybody knows what a bong's used for. And I, I'm all for someone having, owning a business and making a living. But I think the concern for, I think a lot of people in town is just the square is more, it's always been more of a family-centered kind of place. And we have like a lot of kids in and out, like they were saying, and I know like First Baptist Little Lights program, they walk down to the square to the library. So, it's just one of those things where I don't care how people say, what they use it for, but we all know what it's used for. And I think that's just, that's something that maybe people are concerned about a little more than maybe a vape. But that's just what I've seen.
We do have, hey, like, on the wall, we have displayed, uh, we have bongs displayed on the wall. But I was asking, I forgot who I asked. I asked someone to like, if we can cover the windows or like do something like that. I mean, we're open to, to opinions, you know?
Right.
Like, to hide it from the kids and like, I don't know, last time I was watching the council meeting, someone said that maybe, uh, have it set up to where the only way people can know what's inside is when they walk inside. Like, I still wanna put some kind of, you know, dejays outside because-
Yeah.
But you still have to advertise for a business no matter where you are. But, I mean, I'm open to, you know, tinting the windows or, or maybe putting like a big enough sign to where like you can see out what you can't see in or, or whatever. If you have any ideas or if anyone has any ideas, uh, we're like perfectly open to that. We don't have no problem.
Wouldn't that take away from the historic love if you're doing that?
Yeah, see, that, that, uh, that's the main thing, that we didn't wanna just go, I was gonna tint the windows.
Right.
But then, I don't wanna do that because then if someone come in, oh, look at this shady building with the windows tinted. So, it would probably be backwards doing that, you know?
Oh, yeah.
So, if you have any suggestions, there's like a vinyl, I think, or something that you could put on there where, where you could put like a picture of something. So, maybe we can work the square into a picture or something.
Talk plants. I think plants could be a thing.
A sign guy would be here somewhere.
And, um, you know, I haven't been in there, but I, I think there was a rumor maybe that they were in the window. And I just think as long as, I don't think people want their kids walking by and being able to look right there in the window and go, hey mommy, what's that? And them having to explain it to a child, so-
I think the main concern that we've heard is not having the bongs and the associated paraphernalia as the primary display of the front windows.
Yeah.
Right.
To make sure, you know, to have that. It's legal for you to sell, I mean, it's legal for you to sell it, nobody can stop you from selling it.
But that would be rude. That would be rude.
Right, but not have it be predominantly out front.
No, I understand.
You know, right there on the side.
So, so, we never put them like right in the front of the window. Like, but when you walk by, I mean, I'm pretty sure if you look in, it's a big glass window. And there's, and there's four of them and the door has a big window on it. If you walk by, you're gonna see them. So, so like I was saying, I think that if we come up with something that we can put on it to where it, it doesn't like mess up the look of the town and still, or maybe a mirror, a mirror tent or something or something that we can put on there to where when someone does walk by, I'm fine. I mean, we're open to whatever, you know, is on the board. We don't have to have it wide open. I'm alright with that. We're never gonna go and place a bong, right? And I'm gonna, I'll probably put some plants up or something and, you know what I'm saying, in front of there.
What kind of plant?
Not, not those. Not those kind of plants.
Okay. Not the funny leaves ones, right?
No, for sure, not those kind of plants. Which, which would be really, really good for advertising, but we're not gonna do that.
No, it won't be good. Uh, I think, speaking for myself, you leave the window open. It's transparent. You, you start putting stuff up to hide stuff, people are gonna assume the worst.
Yes, it's gonna raise more questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, we're open.
But it's your business.
Yes, sir.
I mean, the marketplace will determine whether or not you make it, I can tell you.
Who's the marketplace?
The people that'll come in there and buy from you. And if they think, if they think you're doing something illegal, they won't come in.
No, right, of course, of course. No, we're not doing anything illegal. Anything that we have in there is 100% illegal. I mean, we could all leave there, we leave here now and go over there and I'll show everyone what everything is, anything you have questions about or if you get, if you guys think that it's better for the town, for us to change something, do anything, and we're like fully open to doing that. We're not, well, we're not-
Be transparent.
Yeah, 100%, 100%.
I mean, I know from my research, CBD oils are beneficial for many people for many different health.
Yes, sir.
There is a benefit there, but it's, a lot of people, maybe a misconception, they, they don't understand the difference between young and CBD and marijuana and THC. There is a definite difference.
Oh, yeah.
I do. And again, small town, people have their opinions and rumors start flying.
Yeah.
I mean, firstly, I, I wish you well.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I encourage anyone in the legal business to concede. We could use a tax rate, I'll be honest with you. I'd rather have a tax-producing enterprise on the square than any building, so.
Yeah, who's like-
I feel like once, once word is out and everyone does know that we're there, I feel like it'll be a big tax, tax rate.
And maybe people can get a retirement plan from Watertown one day. You never know. That'd be nice.
You better sell a lot of stuff.
Couple of, yes, couple of questions. Um, so you don't sell THC in any way, shape or form, is that correct?
No, everything we sell is on, THC is, is 100% illegal. But farm bill may, may help legal in the state of Tennessee.
Okay, because the primary concerns that I've heard are A proximity to the library, B proximity to a church, and C openly advertising CBD and bongs. Even if CBD is quote-unquote legal, the, um, perception of CBD versus marijuana is a challenge for a lot of people. So, um, those are the concerns that have been brought to my attention.
I understand those concerns, but people advertise cigarettes, you know? People advertise, I feel like this is nothing other than like a cigarette, you know, or like, or like alcohol. Maybe, maybe, uh, maybe, uh-
But they don't sell cigarettes and alcohol next to the library?
You're, you're legal.
Uh, no, 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 I understand. No.
So, that's, that's why people are coming to-
I'm not fighting on that. I'm, I'm, I'm 100%. I'm 100% with you on that. I wouldn't want, but I wouldn't want my kids to go and do, and do that either, you know? My, all my kids have came there with me. My son has actually spent a day with me and he's six. And he tells me, hey dad, what is this or what is this? And I'm like, oh, we ain't gonna worry about that right now, you know? Like, I don't want my kids to be exposed to that either, so, so I'm like 100% okay. Like, there's no one gonna be outside sitting smoking, uh, smoke. I mean, they might vape outside, I can't control that. But no one's gonna take no flower and go outside and sit outside and like blow a jay sitting in front of everyone, you know? I mean, we're not gonna be that kind of business. We don't even let people smoke outside. So, it's like, uh, I feel like if, if you have any ideas or if anyone has any ideas to kind of like, uh, kind of, I guess, hide it in a way, but without taking away from the, from the square, I feel like we're 100% to do that. Uh, we tried to get the Optics place first, you know the Optics place over here? But the lady, I, I, I forgot her name, Linda or Laura, she just didn't want to get rid of it for some reason.
She's really sweet, though.
Yeah. I think from the majority of people that I've spoken to about it, I think a lot of people's problem is not necessarily maybe what business you are as opposed to the location. Because of, like he said, the proximity, like, you can't sell alcohol within so many feet of the library or the square. And I think a lot of people around here treat CBD, that kind of thing, the same, in the same category. And so they just, I think that's most people's thing is the square. But I understand from a business perspective too, the square is more of the happening spot, so.
It's like more protection for, for people, you know, it's kinda easier. It's like the center of the town. I mean, if, if there was a, if there was another option, I think the better option for us would have been on, over here, on the, on the main road. But, uh, like I said, we tried to get that building up. I even asked the guy at the Garrow place. He, he was saying that he was selling it for a while, but he just wanted 200 more. I, I understand.
You know, that's the only place you got. I'm just, I'm just trying to let you know like what I've heard and I don't-
It sounds-
No, you're fine, go ahead.
It sounds like, Mayor, which I understand, it's a dog problem.
Oh, yes, sir.
Cigarettes, whatever you're selling in there.
Yes, sir, I understand.
As long as it's, I, we don't see a bunch of kids, uh, in the store unless they're with the parents, then I'm okay with it. But once I see a bunch of kids coming in that store, then I'm, I'm gonna be against it 100%.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I, I would be against that too. I wouldn't want my kids.
And I, and that will happen if you're not real careful. It's happening everywhere else, so you know, you know it's gonna happen here.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's our worst fear is some parents saying, go in there and get you something.
I mean, that's fine. They can come in.
We're gonna get it.
Send your, test it out. Test it out.
Well, I was gonna ask you, you have any objection to the police department stepping in there every now and then?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Eric was in there, I wanna say, uh, maybe about four days ago, Eric was in there. He came in and then he, he was asking for some dip. But, but we actually haven't got that yet. We're actually waiting on dip and like cigars and stuff like that.
I'm not talking about a couple in there buying as much, just coming there and looking around, yeah.
Oh, come and get it, it's fine. It's fine.
If they wanna buy, that's their business.
Anytime, anytime, we're open. Anytime, anytime, we'll be there.
Alright, any other questions? We got, by the way, I appreciate the two of y'all coming over and making self-aware questions.
It's hard to believe you guys. We are gonna be good additions to the community because we plan on doing a lot for the community. We're not just trying to take advantage.
Okay, good.
I do have one suggestion for you, and I know it's available. Larry hit on it with people not understanding the difference. Maybe you could come up with a, a poster, put in your window that speaks to the health benefits and explains exactly what CBD is versus, you know, explain what it is. So, people can educate, educate our community a little bit more as to what you have and what you're all to help mitigate that.
Yes, sir.
Misconception of that.
I didn't know that it was okay to post anything, you know? Because of the historic, I didn't know if that would be a problem or like, oh, we have a logo that got made and we got it collected and she told me that, you know, you have to build it like an old, old, like old town look. And we have like a brown logo and it's, and it's, and it's really vintage and nice. And we weren't just gonna put two real big logos on the windows and we weren't gonna put any signs up unless it was for like my long yard sale or, or like something for the city. But other than that, we didn't really wanna put any information or advertising anything on it.
I, I guess having some educational material, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, may help your cause with the image of the county.
Other businesses on the square have signs up in their window. I don't think he's saying you have to put up a, you know, huge.
I'm not saying flash the whole window.
But, I mean, I don't think the historic committee will have an issue with you putting up some, you know, little-
Yeah, let's, have some educational material available.
Maybe we'll print out some flyers or something.
And give it out.
And maybe give them out or, or anybody that comes in.
Some kind of handout.
I think that's a good idea. Maybe everybody can Facebook a post or something, and people can go online and look at it.
We've, we've grilled you long enough. We got other people here. Appreciate you.
It was nice meeting you guys.
Yeah.
Anytime you guys will stop by, we'll be there.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Very nice meeting you guys.
Same here. Anybody else in the public corner addresses? Yes, ma'am. You can.
I wanted to first start with a question, and my question is, what is the town doing to take steps to make the sidewalks ADA accessible? Um, up to the standards for ADA accessibility?
Could you turn on the light?
So, what steps are the town taking to make sidewalks meet ADA accessibility standards?
Well, we've always taken the position that the sidewalk belongs to the property owner.
Ah.
Now, I will tell you that I would be interested in finding, finding some kind of federal or state money that would allow us to upgrade sidewalks. I recognize the sidewalks are in bad shape.
So, I would like to, to speak on that because I spoke to Samantha Deal, who's the Transportation Program Monitor for Tennessee. And she said that the sidewalks are not the responsibility of the residents except for in the case of cleaning up for ice or snow as well as trash removal, and that it comes back to the town. And that there, um, the multimodal access grant is coming up. Are we, is the town, um, planning to apply for that? Because that gives money towards the sidewalks and the towns around us have applied for that, um, grant. We have, um, recently cleaned up our sidewalk. We've taken off about five to six inches of overgrowth in our section. But just our neighbor over from us can't because the sidewalk has literally been ripped up. And I know that this is a money problem. That's why there are, um, grants accessible for that. But it, um, for those that are handicapped as well as just families, we have a stroller. We can't even go down our street and we don't live close to, to, I mean, we do live close to the center and we can't. We have to be in the street, literally in the street, and the head cars, you know, have their windows down and say, get out of the street. Well, I can't. I don't have, we don't have that option with kids to not be, where am I supposed to go? All the way to somebody's door because then that person's gonna, going to say something too. But I just wanted to share a couple, um, photos, if I may. And on, um, March 13th, I did email you, uh, Mayor, as well as Vice Mayor and council members. I haven't heard from anybody, um, back yet about these issues. But these just show some of the photos around town. They're where a wheelchair doesn't even have the choice to come into our town. And we are, we're a tourist town for Tennessee with the trains coming here. And you're making it, we're making it inaccessible for these people. And we want them to come and say, wow, Watertown's such a great town. We have people coming, maybe even with little kids and they can't get around or they're, they have to, elderly have to worry about their own safety, um, for it. We'd love to help. I'm not just saying, oh, what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do? We've cleared our sidewalk to the best of our ability. We're, we're also willing to help our neighbors clear theirs. But, um, from our neighbor to our, um, our neighbor's driveway to their sidewalk is a one-foot drop from their driveway down. For a stroller, that's very difficult. Once your child is even a little bit heavy to get that up. A wheelchair cannot get up that, that large of a leap. So, not necessarily saying every single sidewalk, but to make, I mean, there's chunks missing where somebody could fall, fall in and I'm sure the town doesn't wanna be sued.
So, so the lady at the state made the blanket assertion that sidewalks are the pro, are the responsibility of the city?
No, she, so she said in Tennessee law that the sidewalks are the responsibility of the town to only keep up what is already there. We are not responsible for-
Would you ask her to put that in writing and reference the law she's talking to?
So, so it is in writing. I emailed all of you and her email, her email is in the email that I sent all of you.
I get your, I may have a question, but I don't recall seeing that she referenced the Tennessee code.
Oh, a code, remember. So, I'll ask her for a code in particular regarding that, yeah. I mean, I can't see financially how can that be the responsibility of the residents? I mean, we know how much the average resident makes in this town and financially, it's not possible for a resident to replace a sidewalk.
Well, the opinion implies that the city has got to have sidewalks. And I don't think we have to have sidewalks.
No, they don't have to have sidewalks.
So, if they belong to us, we could take them all up.
She said you don't, the, no town has to have sidewalks, but we are responsible for keeping our sidewalks up to ADA standards for accessibility.
But what if we didn't, if we didn't pour the sidewalks? If we didn't?
Well, like, in my house, I took my sidewalk up because I felt like it was a danger to someone.
Yeah.
So, so that no one would get hurt on my property. I took, I had my uncle come in and we took, re-removed my sidewalk.
I would love to have sidewalks. Don't misunderstand me.
Yeah, right.
But-
I would too, but I couldn't afford to replace my sidewalk.
Well, for people who have-
So, therefore I took it up.
Well, for people who have taken that, though, we would appreciate that some, some neighbors not to say anything when we tell our children, yes, go into their property because that is safer than you going into the road right now.
I totally agree.
Yeah.
You know, most of the streets in Watertown, if you consider the right of way from, of the street to the-
street to the property line, you'll find out that most of the sidewalk is on the property owner.
It's on private property.
Right. It's not on, it's not on the the city of Watertown.
This the in the center.
From the center, you've measured from the center of the street to the, as far as the right away comes, all the way to the property, and you'll find out that most of the streets in Watertown, the sidewalk is on the property.
So are you telling me that I have as a property owner, do I have the right to take up my sidewalk and put a fence there instead, so I can extend my property to where my sidewalk is right now, on both sides of my property? I'd love to have more property, and I will pull up my sidewalk to have my property, if I may.
My advice to you would be to make sure what you own, okay, before you start pulling up or whatever. We got streets in town that are not wide enough for two cars to meet, and to say that we gotta put sidewalks on either side, the only way it can be done is on private property. So I would.
I mean, I'd be okay with somebody coming on, but our street has a sidewalk going all the way through, it's just not being maintained, so you can't use it.
Well, I don't think you'll find anybody around here, including myself, that would be opposed to having good sidewalks.
That's great.
But there's always people that will tell you, and I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about the people you're talking to, they'll give you their opinion, and then they'll tell you there are grants out there, but those grants never seem to come through. So if the lady will put her opinion in writing and reference what Tennessee statute she's relying upon, I will use that to make an application for a sidewalk.
But one about the towns around us who have been granted sidewalks, cause some of the towns around us were granted last year for the twenty twenty-two year, you can see it online which ones have been granted that.
Yeah.
I mean, can we, I feel like we should at least try as a town to get that grant money, because it is, it's
I don't.
It's free money to help with some of the issues.
Well, not not necessarily, sometimes there's a match with it.
Yes, it says it's ninety to ninety-five percent that they will.
They'll pay ninety or ninety-five percent?
It says ninety to ninety-five, depending on your town.
Well, we'll we'll take a look at pursuing that.
Okay, the um application process is April twenty-sixth to May sixteenth, so I hope that our town will apply for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your interest, too, appreciate it. Now, you got some guests back there with you, I see them.
Yes.
Tell me who you got there.
These kids would like to be able to safely go on the sidewalks and get to the library, cause we travel on the road to get to the library almost every day.
Yeah, well, tell me their names.
Mabel, Josephine, Eleanor, and Bonnie, and my husband Christopher.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
So you got four girls?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, the little boys in town will be glad of that.
Do you do you have the link to that grant? Do you have like a?
Is it a grant? I can send, oh, no, I didn't, you put the link to the grant and then you know.
Is it?
Um.
I just wanna know where I can find it, I don't.
It's called.
The Global Access Grant, it'll be on the top.
It's called the twenty twenty-three multimodal access grant, if you put it up, it comes right up.
Okay, thank you.
And I have looked into the um application and you can you can see who has been awarded each year, how many applicants apply, and then how they are um granted.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Alright, uh IT guys, we got any questions over there? Alright, I'm gonna move in into our regular business, and I believe that the fire chief's up for us, there he is, he's sitting in the dark. Hey Blake.
How you doing, buddy? Doing great, hope y'all are doing well. Uh, last month in February, we had a total of forty-four calls, um fifteen of those in the city and twenty-nine in the county, uh with an average of a little over a call and a half a day. So outside of that, our uh two thousand international pumper, um we had a issue with it the other night, the PTO gearbox has been leaking, or it began leaking oil from it, and so we're uh in the process now of getting quotes to look into having that repaired. There's not a catastrophic failure yet, but as caution, we pulled it out of service to get quotes to kinda see uh what a repair would be for that, so whenever I find that out, I'll advise and see how you all wanna proceed with that, so.
Okay. Anything else?
Outside of that, I don't have anything.
Question for fire chief?
Out of the calls, roughly, is that in the county calls that were responded to? How many of those were medical, how many of those were fire? Do you have that?
Uh, yes, sir, uh nineteen uh in the county were medical, and thirteen in the city were medical. As far as fires, one structured fire in the city, we didn't run any in the county, and then three brush fires in the county, we didn't have any in the city, um and then a fire alarm in the city, so.
Thank you.
Other questions? Alright, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
Dale, you're next.
I did uh get a quote from Wascon for the blower replacement with the labor charge to install the blower, um went ahead and approved that, um as we discussed last meeting. Um, and I did send you guys out some information on our uh where we were at with our consent agreed order and our engineering um plans with that order, I know there was some several questions come up the last few meetings, and there's quite a bit of information to read on on those whenever you get bored, so.
Is that the C of C M O M that came out?
Yeah, the C mom, yeah, yeah.
The two hundred and thirteen, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But uh.
I got twenty in stock.
That's the things I have for you this month.
Any questions?
I finished reading it.
Bet bet you read the mitigation plan too, didn't you? Had one in each hand, didn't you? Alright, any questions, Dale, and his helper, hi Lily.
I had, I did have a question with the report that you did send out.
Okay.
A few pages that I read, um it did talk in there about how we need to be in compliance with some training and some safety material.
That's for uh city employees, that's not for my end employees, yeah, that's for, yeah.
Is is that a requirement, is that a recommendation?
Uh, I think that was recommendations in there, um I think we had OSHA come by a couple years ago and inspected us, but uh I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure what that that is, but uh, yeah, that's more for the city employees, which I'm not a city employee.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Alright, thank you, Dale.
Mm-hmm.
Chief, you ready?
I'm ready. How's everybody singing?
Good. Have any questions on the report, stats, or the stuff that I sent out?
Just have to get used to the software.
Yes.
For the report.
It's amazing, makes it so much easier, everything's easier, easier to audit, easier for the federal government to audit, state to audit, you know, you just give them a little bit of access and it's over.
We don't get it so easy for you, or have it like this?
Well, you're not running me off.
Um, I did have a question, not concerning the report.
Yeah.
But it's probably all business, but I'm always afraid y'all are gonna walk, I mean, probably new business, and I'm afraid y'all are gonna leave. Um, I had a complaint from two citizens about weapons being discharged within the city, being a bow and arrow.
Yes.
And I did not know, is a bow and arrow considered a weapon? It should be, cause it can.
Well, you know, that has horrendous effects if it doesn't go where it's supposed to.
Exactly.
And uh we did go up there and, you know, we, he was persuaded to quit quit doing it at that time.
He didn't.
Well, when we when we left, he did.
Right.
You know, but we didn't get a call back saying he started back again.
So my thing in the the two property owners was like, if our kids are outside, of course the danger, and I get that.
Yep.
If he is such an accurate shock, where he does not mind kids playing behind there, he's broken down hay bales, then why doesn't he move his hay bales to face his property and house, so that if it misses, it's hitting his house, not potentially hitting kids?
Right.
And I don't see how a bow and arrow is not considered a weapon?
This scares me, and you wouldn't want me shooting it anywhere.
Me either.
So uh, yeah, but you know, like I said, when we went there originally, that's when we stopped, and they didn't call back, but I'll, you know, I know exactly what it is, and I will go handle it tomorrow myself, so, does that help?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Is it not a weapon, that that my question?
Well, I mean, it is, clearly, and it was like a crossbow, nobody could ever use them, and then, you know, when some folks that wanted to hunt had some disabilities, and they legalized that stuff for that, so the answer to that is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Very deadly consequences.
Cause I was told, I was, yes, I was told, I I think it is, but I don't really know. I'm like.
Scares me.
What's.
And and even if it wasn't, if it's something that could harm someone, it wasn't used in a wise manner, then still would have to.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanna publicly uh bring to your attention, um I have received um kudos on Officer Benjamin from somebody that he wrote a ticket to, so y'all must be doing it right, if you can give somebody a ticket and they still say thank you.
And and they posted on social media saying.
Oh, did they? Did they?
Well, that's a change, and I appreciate that, I'll accept that, and thank you for saying something publicly. Um, you know, it's always good to hear some positive, like the mayor said, the other. You're enough negative, you sure wanna get the positive in it. Yes.
And I do, when I come to the police officer yesterday or the day before, and say, hey, I just got a complaint, I was getting ready to drive by, he said, I want it, and he was, he was on it, like, and I appreciate that, and we say, he's standing.
Thank you for conveying that. Other questions, comments? Alright, you wanted to talk about AEDs? Yes, so um I have, uh being in, I'm in the medical field too, and been an instructor for many of those assets or aspects of the medical field, I certified everybody at the police department, except for Bill, he didn't wanna do it, but from AEDU, CPR, infant CPR and infant AED, all the things. So we we had a, we still have an AED, uh I was able to piece it together, I had to order some pads, and asked the county for some help to get that, um so we got that, and I have, just being in the medical field, I have some friends that sell refurbished stuff, and um got a price on them, and you know, I would like to put, get four, that would give us one for each car, cause I have one that I've been able to piece back together, and put those in the cars. You know, uh at the end of the day, um you know, we don't really publicize all the stuff that goes on as in medically, and our response times, I've implemented that our officers go on every single medical call period, uh let alone just for presence to help the EMS and or just for, you know, to keep the situation calm. Um, we've had to deploy a lot of Narcan to some of these folks that are not breathing, this, that, and the other, and there's times that, you know, the fire department can't be there, they may be on another call somewhere else, and it's my guys waiting on the ambulance to come from Lebanon, there's nothing wrong with that, I get it, but I just would like to have, you know, those tools that are necessary to help the community, and plus, uh when you, some of the grants I apply for and get, and this, that, and the other, some of them are contingent on different things, you know, there's like, hey, do you have this, do you have that? So, you know, I think that it's a, I I sent the thing, I think it was like twenty-three eighty, but you know, I would ask for twenty-four hundred dollars, that would buy four AEDs, that'll give us five AEDs, and I'll put one in every police car, and I've got some, just some, you know, some minor things, there's a lot of folks that walk in and want Band-Aids, or will go to kids, and I've put some first aid, minor first aid kits in each car, but I truly do believe that it would probably be an asset to the community. You know, I've done CPR on some folks here in town, you know, it, again, I'm used to that, because I'm in the medical business, but uh I think that it would help. I recommend we we make that purchase, is there a motion?
I think a motion to purchase for AEDs.
Yeah, AEDs, yes. Not to exceed twenty-four hundred dollars?
Twenty-four hundred.
Is there a second to that?
I would say.
Okay, we've got a couple of seconds, discussion?
Uh, what's uh like the lifespan of a.
So sometimes the pads are good for a year, sometimes they're good for two years, a lot of it is uh what brand or what manufacturer manufactures that, and the batteries are usually good for two years, sometimes they last longer, but you know, uh they're not self-contained, you can replace the batteries. Uh, I had to order some special batteries the other day from uh Amazon, because nobody carried them, but these are um insertable batteries that you just order when they expire, they're about forty-eight dollars a piece, so when they expire, the pads are good for about two years, you know, and and again, uh even if an expired pad could, will still deliver the shock, you know, so don't really get caught up on that, they would still deliver the shock, and you know, the thing is, is hands-on early CPR, better survival rate.
Okay. Um, that's a question I had, you mentioned Band-Aids, do you have like um gunshot wound clotting agents, tourniquets, immediate triage stuff that's available before, because I know you have to secure a scene before medics can arrive.
Yes.
So if you're unable to secure a scene, and the medics are unable to respond until the scene is secured, then you're probably going to have to administer the first aid to the officer or the victim of the event. Do you have those?
So, yes.
Supplies?
Uh, every officer I have has tourniquet on his vest, uniform, to the whole department, I have many tourniquets, I have quick clotting agents, um I have my medical bags and some of the things that have, were there at the police department, it bought many years ago, I've not really deployed that to everybody, because again, our jobs is stop the immediate and wait, you know, and keep it, get it to that point, and then help come, okay? I don't wanna put a full-fledged medical team out there.
Right.
But yes, we do have everything you described, we have tourniquets, quick clottings, uh you know, and and Band-Aids, again, if if we're putting a Band-Aid on a scene, it's cause somebody, you know, we're counseling or consoling someone, not because it's stopping bleeding, but yes, we do have all those, uh every officer has a tourniquet.
Kind of pushover, same way. I was in the news the other night, officers in Mountain View got a car, and the guy, every day, they get one we call, and he cut his throat, or cut his neck, self-inflicted wound, and uh he would probably die, but the the officers had a complete medical kit with him, and they administered first aid there, and it's probably saved his life.
Yes.
I was gonna ask, do we have a complete medical kit in the police car that's running?
There there is a complete medical kit, but what we would have run into until I got everybody certified is, nobody was certified to use it. Now, it's all, it's all fun and games.
But anybody use a, put a
Well.
A tourniquet or a pad or something, or say somebody's life would look like medical kit.
Yeah, that that sounds, you're right in that, but you know, again, everything we use, carry, and administer is something we have to have training on, period, you know, by by what the law says, and what the TCA say and the government says. So the answer to your question is, yes, we do have all that, we don't have it in every car, because you know, I've just been.
Just one that's running.
Yeah, well, yes, but again, you know, our priority is to get there, to take control of the scene, and then if we need to do something, do it, you know, I don't wanna turn us into just medical, because at the end of it, we're the police when we get there. We have to do all these other, we can do all these other things to help too, but we have to make sure that everything else is secure first. But yes, I do have a first aid bag, and yes, everybody's been trained now, given their CPR cards and their training cards for such to do to help.
Well, I just saw it on TV, and I thought, well, that's close to home.
Yeah.
And the guy was gonna die probably.
Right.
And they probably saved his life by having the equipment there to do it.
Oh, absolutely, yes, and you know, a lot of that stuff is just direct pressure and wait until somebody gets there, but yes, we do have tourniquets, uh other other means of way to do things, cloths, this, that, and the other in each car. Other questions? Did we vote on the twenty-four hundred? We didn't, did we? Yes. We all vote for it?
Pretty much, and they said, yeah, I'm.
Yeah, we hadn't voted, alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. You wanna talk about these ordinances, or you just want us to look at them tonight and bring them back next month? It it's it's completely up to you, I I don't know how much review, how much you all have reviewed them, so. I just saw them when I got here tonight. Well, if you just saw it today, my suggestion would be probably everybody needs to have an understanding about it, and so that way they can form questions, because there probably and so that way they can form questions, because there probably will be some questions, because, you know.
We can approve it on first reading tonight, if you feel, because it's going to take two.
Okay.
And then do the, the second one's the important.
I'm good with that.
On the golf cart ordinance, I'll go ahead and recommend that to you, knowing that there, or not knowing, but there could possibly be some changes to it, so I recommend that to you tonight.
Can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
Could the golf cart ordinance be amended to limit where our golf carts can be driven? Can we stop and, as you probably said, to go three, four turns down?
Well, I can answer that. State law prohibits golf carts on state routes. So to be in compliance, as it's written with TCA five-five-eight-one-nine-one, as, as it's written, it's already illegal. And this ordinance is specifically within city limits, so it wouldn't be applicable once they cross city limits, so.
Maybe we need to take a look at this and bring it back next time.
Yeah, that's my only concern.
I'll withdraw my recommendation, we'll take a look at it in April and May. Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, let me make a comment here, and sometimes I have to be the bad guy, and this is one time I'm going to have to be. The budget reports that I'm looking at, we are nine days away from being seventy-five percent through the end of the year. I'm not picking on anybody, I'm not going to call any department out, but we have line items that are grossly out of line. We spent more money than we should have at this stage of the year. My concern is twofold, number one, most of our money has come in by the end of February, because that's when property tax collection ceases, we continue to get sales tax, but we've got, what I've, what I'm about to say is, we need to slow down spending from now till the end of the year, the end of the fiscal year. If we have to have something, if it's an emergency, like your pump, you know, we can't stand the sewer line to go down, we're going to deal with that, but on the wants, put a hold on it for a while. The reason being that once the audit is done, or once the end, the end of the year comes to, comes to a close, and we have outspent what we budgeted or whatever, they don't call y'all into Nashville, they call me. So I'm going to do a little self-preservation tonight. We're not, we're not anywhere on our budget that we can't recover, but if we keep on spending and spending, I mean, I'm like everybody else, I like, I don't mind spending, but I mind it when they call me from Nashville, and they come up here and they visit, and so I'm going to be watching it very closely for the next ninety days.
Okay.
Not picking on anybody, because I can actually find every department with one or two things that are grossly out of line. Now, we, like I say, it's not too late to recover, but somebody's got to be the bad guy, so you can get mad at me if you want to. It's all right. That's all I say on that. Hope everybody understands the spirit within which it's offered. Had this come up under old business, but I'll go ahead and say, the capital outlay note's been requested, all the information's been set down there, they required us to get more than one bid from a local, from banks. We tried six different banks, the ladies did, one of them came in with a higher bid, the other five refused a bid. So I have submitted that to the state, and we're just waiting on that, and I think Chief said our cars could be here next week.
Yeah, yes.
So we're ready to go with the, with the money as soon as that comes in. That doesn't apply to my last statement, we've already made that decision, it's already voted on. So we'll, I hope by the end of the month, we got them.
I sure hope so.
Yeah, we need them. And the, Mike Walker was in my office this afternoon before I left, and he told me that our surplus cars are bringing. Yeah, pretty good, pretty good prices.
Yeah, they went up considerable, so this weekend I saw it was six dollars and fifty cents, and then some of them went up to five hundred and something, four hundred. Yes, yes, yes.
And he said that the last thirty minutes or three hours will bend most of them, jack up.
I believe that all our options are going to pretty ends the fifteenth of April.
Fifteenth or thirteenth.
Thirteenth's what the flyer says.
Yeah. Looks like a good choice. Looks like a good choice.
When I looked at it earlier today, it's only one day's left, so.
I stumbled on that by luck, I had to call in at the right time.
Well.
They're good.
Looking good. We're not going to retire on it, but we'll, we'll, anything we bring in, it's worth it. All right, anything else, Chief? Anybody? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, old business, we, speaking of money, we had our audit from last year. I hope y'all have had a chance to look at it, nothing we can change in it, of course, what we are required to do is accept it. So I make, I can't make a motion, I recommend to you that we accept the audit for fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-two. Is there a motion?
I'll motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, that carries. Already talked about surplus property. Hazard mitigation plan, you have a resolution there that approves the hazard mitigation plan that Larry Bird said he read, so if y'all have any questions, I have not read it, I'll be honest with you, but we got to do it.
I skimmed some of it, because a lot, most of what was there, it's already been there.
It's been there.
Revisions of some things, and what I seen their visions of was that it was being schooled on some things.
Okay, well, I don't have any problem recommending this to you, and Danielle, my office, put pass first reading on there, but actually, it only takes one reading, that's all they want, so I recommend that to you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Y'all making me work tonight to get these motions. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, okay. Our IT person, besides the gentleman sitting over there, I said, IT, your head's popped up. Yeah, but I'm talking about Chris Andrews, putting me on notice at the first of this month that he would not be doing that for us anymore, and I have employed, I think I sent this out to you, Aaron Wilson, he will be doing it for five hundred dollars a month, first twenty months, first twenty hours are included in that. If it goes past twenty hours, then we pay fifty dollars per hour. That is actually cheaper than what we've been paying, so I just wanted to report that to you. You got a budget report, the one I was referring to was the one that came in last week. I got one today that came in yesterday, I hadn't had a chance to look at it. I don't think there'd be a substantial difference in it in just seven days, but at any event, our budget's in good shape. I'm just want to stay in the good graces of the folks in Nashville. So we're fine, got, got money, no, meeting the payroll, don't want anybody thinking we don't have money, we do. And if you'll look at that pretty close, you'll see that we probably got more money than we've ever had.
I'm just going to bring up Bob at the, they're working on an old town hall.
Yeah.
They have quite a whole nightmare over there.
Got a mess.
I brought him some CPR and three gas bill, just to wear so they can breathe in there, but the place is pretty, it's rough.
It is rough.
So I don't know that, Bob does a great job, but I don't know that they can handle all of what's happening there.
Well, they might not, but we got to get it cleaned out, and that's what they're working on, and they're wearing the protection.
They had a bunch of questions about just leftover printers and stuff, you know, that need to, it's basically junk, it's all been kind of gutted up, but, you know.
When we get a list of it, we'll have to declare a surplus, either dispose of it or sell it.
What about the roof on that building?
It's rough, we're going to have to put a roof on it, and we're waiting on a bid on that.
So I went up there and looked around it, and it's, yeah, it's had a.
Going to have to, going to have to have a roof on it.
Yeah.
That will come under a lead and not a won.
Yeah.
Can the city, like, can we use that space as, like, can we rent that out, or can you do anything with it other than just sitting there, like, can we rent that out to something to get some revenue back out of it, or does it have to be a city?
We can, I have to be careful how I say this, but I'll just have to say it because it's factual. That building is not ADA compliant, there's only one way up and down, there's no fire escape, you get caught up there, there's no way out. That's the reason we moved over here.
Right.
Probably have to have different entrance, and it currently has to make it acceptable for outside people to be doing actions in that building.
Can it be done, yes, but we'll have to make it ADA compliant. There's some work coming on that, not just the roof, but that'll be one of the things that will be coming through. Good questions?
Can we figure out how to get the guys over there some kind of makeshift shower, so they can maybe just clean off some, after they've been in the sewer, I seen them the other day, and they were, like, pretty bad. Trying to get back in their cars and stuff to go home, and, you know, I know they have a sink and whatnot, but it would be nice if they had a.
Well, we could, I've never had anyone of them say anything to me about it.
No, they didn't say.
I wonder if they use a water plant, they need a shower.
Is that what they do?
Yeah.
I didn't know.
They have something to get in their eyes, and they have to wash.
I just seen one the other day, and it was pretty covered, and he was going to get back in his car, and I was like, you know, if they had just something to, one of those cheap plastic makeshift corner showers, anything at their hub over there, it'd be great to just.
You know, I just had a meeting with Bob in there this morning at nine o'clock, why wouldn't he tell me that?
I'm just trying to think, I haven't been worrying about it.
No, I don't think he does, he didn't, he didn't say nothing, I just seen him.
I mean, I can't, I can't fix something I don't know anything about.
They've probably been doing it, or why they've been doing it forever, and they just don't think that they know it.
Yeah, no, it wasn't brought to me by them, I just, I seen them, and they, yeah, I wouldn't have it in my car, but, you know.
Oh, I understand, no, I want to make, give them good working conditions.
I don't want my owner getting a car with some old tourniquets.
And he was covered, I mean.
That's what's going in the bag.
Well, I want to give them good working conditions, I, let me say too, I've forgotten Christopher, I'm sorry, who are you, who are you here about?
Well, the hazard mitigation plan, I just wanted to pass out the layout from the square and mention.
Oh, okay, but we've adopted a mitigation plan, so you want to go ahead and do that? Yeah, I didn't mean to keep you sitting there, you could, should have spoke up during public business.
No.
Once I get to talking, I get on the rolls.
This is the same thing I passed out at.
Yeah, got a gentleman proposing this, you want us to take a look at it?
Yeah.
With no action tonight, right?
I want you to vote on it or anything, I just want you to mull over.
Okay.
But I talked to him today, because you were.
You were ultimately concerned about somebody having an ultimatum, or, you know, an end game, doesn't. This is, this is a conceptual plan, if you're going to be milling the roads in Watertown, this is just the square. This is his version, it's a conceptual plan of taking out the, the through access in front of the pavilion, you're not losing any existing parking spaces, he's relocated them, but it more than doubles the existing open space in the middle, and that would be for Watertown to decide whatever they want to do, whether you plant flowers there, put picnic, whatever is there.
Sure.
His connection with the town, because I wasn't able to answer the last time when you asked me to plan a vision, he, Don Simpson is his uncle.
Okay.
And he works for, he's partners with Reagan Smith and Associates, and then Caleb Thorne is the co-partner of that. So they've all got connections to Watertown, that's why it was near and dear to their heart when they, they came up with this. It's not something he's asking for any compensation for, if it gets to this and you all like it, and it gets to that point where you all are restriping, he can draw up something a little more detailed for you to all to submit to whoever you all contract to do striping with, but this would save you a little bit on pavement, I mean, there's a, I don't, it's not a lot, but there's a little bit of area you don't have to repave, but you would have to mill that up, and you can just leave it.
We're just thinking out loud, for what it's worth, the logical time to do this would be when we start the repaving project.
Yes, that's why I don't want it, I'm not ever asking any action for this, this is just for you all to mull over, if it's something you all like, it would be for you to take, and if it is something, needs something more detail on, he told me to let him know, and when it gets to that point, he can.
We'll, we'll get him up here to talk.
And he says he's more than happy to come up and explain it.
Appreciate you bringing it up, Christopher. All right.
But that's just something, so he's got connections, and he doesn't have an end game, he doesn't want the property that he's getting, it's just something to make it a little bit more functional without as many intersections, and you're not losing any parking.
That's the key. That's the key, if that can, if it happens. All right, anybody got any questions, questions of Christopher? All right, thank you, buddy. Sorry to keep you waiting there. Yep, I'll sign it and get it to you. Okay, that's all the business I had, other than say our next meeting would be April eighteenth at six o'clock, and opening day of our community league is going to be a week from this Saturday. We are not getting much practice time, Mother Nature is not helping us, but we'll all be pretty much in the same boat. The Jeff Tunx is in charge of that, and Jeff is, we are planning on starting April first and ending by the end of school, which a lot of people have wanted that over the years. Once you get out of school, children of divided homes go to live with a parent that doesn't have custody for a while, families take vacations, and it gets trouble sometimes to get a full team together. So we've got, that gives us about seven weeks, doesn't it, Jeff, which is about what we've been doing all along. Okay. All right, we'll go around the table, Larry, I didn't forget, you're the man tonight.
Thank you, sir. Okay, a couple of questions, this one actually added another one. So we're talking about having the paving work done.
Mm-hmm.
I think it would be beneficial to consider the sewage work or water work that needs to be done prior to putting the new pavement down.
Absolutely.
Because we sure don't want to dig new pavement up to fix pipes. So I don't, do we have any idea on the cost associated with the piping around the area that's proposed to be paved?
We don't, once we submit our application for a loan, then we will have, now, we'll have to bid the project out, so we'll have to get with Steve Jones to get that done.
Okay.
I said on the radio yesterday, and I'll say here tonight, for the benefit of people here and those watching, if there are any, we could have three major projects going on between now and the end of the year. We have, or we'll, we'll have funding for the sewer project, because that's going to come from a loan. We will have funding, we have partial funding for the street paving, and then we have our application in for turntable funding, and we have reason to believe that they'll make that decision sometime, perhaps next month or May. If all those three projects come through, we, we could have, but you're right, the sewer's got to go first. Makes no sense to pave and then tear it up. So I'm hopeful that'll, that'll come across.
Bob, about the sewer area in this area, and the sewer line's up here, actually, right, right facing like the front of these buildings.
Mm-hmm.
So that area is, is easier to foot on some of it than some of the other areas in town.
It is, one of the things we have to watch on the square, and you'll probably, you may not pay any attention to it, if you look at it, where we have done paving projects in the past and built it up, if we go much higher on the paving, it'll cause runoff into some of these businesses, so we got to be careful with that. And I suspect that when we pave the square this time, we'll have to take some of it up to replace it.
Yeah, a lot of the streets are.
That's a nice, that's a nice problem to have.
Okay, so, so that was something that just came about. I wanted to talk a little bit about the retirement discussion that we've been having.
Yeah.
And I recognize that we're watching our budget, so I would propose it in a manner that the city wouldn't make any contributions till the next fiscal year, if in fact it were approved. But when I spoke with the gentleman at Wilson Bank and Trust, he's out this week, he wasn't able to attend.
Sure.
But he did give me the information on a basic IRA that is handled in-house at Wilson Bank and Trust.
Okay.
So it's not handled by, you know, somebody in New York or whatever. And he said that the employees can actually go down, and they would need to go down and set it up in their name as their account, and they can make their own contributions. And then the city's only question at that point would be if and how much we can match or set up a match program after so long, you get so much, or however we want to do it. So I'd like to find out if there are any objections, or what the process would be to have employees potentially consider setting up, the ones that want to do it, some may not, setting up their own account, and then us discuss any potential city involvement after the new fiscal year.
I'll be fine with that, Larry, I thought the last thing I had from you was that the gentleman couldn't be here tonight, he was going to come in April and talk to us?
Yes, yes.
So I'd like to hear, you know, so we can ask, ask questions, but yeah, the logical time to do it would begin July one.
Right, just get everything squared away so that the new budget's counting.
Yeah.
Okay, that was one thing.
Can, can he be here, and you mentioned something about the time we start, would we be better off? Would we be better off? Would we be better off to maybe have a work session at five o'clock to let him come in and talk about it and then we go in session at six?
I would assume that would probably be preferable, because I've never met a banker in my life that works after five.
Okay.
I think he would, I mean, I've talked to him about a personal average and I think he would be more willing to be your five horse.
Yeah.
So you want to do that on the eighteenth when we meet?
Sure.
Will you check that city?
I will.
Okay.
Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up was, um, I'd like to, for the council to consider setting up, uh, what I've phrased as a public safety committee. Now, and this would be a replication of what happens in other towns. Because there's a lot of things potentially that you get inundated with as the single point of contact for the city as it relates to, um, citizen needs.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, employee-associated complaints.
Mm-hmm.
Whether it's from the employee or about the employee, I mean, all of that type of stuff. I think potentially that a committee could, um, listen to those things and then make recommendations to the councils so that we don't have to get the ED and have four-hour meetings three times a month potentially to mitigate, uh, risks that could become apparent in the future.
On the safety committee, because I had brought this up before, like if there were a bomb threat, I know through the school, we have a safety plan. We don't talk about it to everyone for certain reasons. I do feel like the city needs to have some type of safety plan. If there was an explosion or whatever, how do we get word out or, you know, that's part of the safety, uh, committee. Also, when the little girl went missing, same thing, or the little girls went missing, having some type of point of contact and safety plan, our police did a wonderful job on that. But I know as council members, we also were getting a lot of phone calls too. Nobody knew which way anybody was going. So I, I do think some type of safety plan, as we are growing, we have more potential.
Well, that's, yeah, that was the, the reasoning behind it, because as we grow, inevitably there are going to be things that citizens would like to have addressed, that we may or may not honestly have time to do all the investigate, investigatory work to determine what options are best, what, what would best be suitable for the city in certain instances. And I think the committee theoretically, because this is the way they set it up in other cities, um, theoretically would consist of a civilian member, a member of the police department, potentially a member of the fire department, and a member of the council as a minimum. I mean, more can be in it, but as a minimum have everybody present. And then whatever situation may arise is vetted, discussed, and then the recommendation on behalf of the committee is brought to the council or yourself.
Well, council has to make a decision on it. Uh, I'm hearing two things. You're talking about events. How do we deal with an event? And you don't have time to call a committee meeting to discuss a missing child. I mean, I would hope that if you get a complaint, you call the police department, you call the fire department.
You want to set an emergency response plan.
Right, but at school that falls under safety, because I'm on the safety team.
We've got, we just voted on a hazard mitigation plan that's supposed to have a lot of stuff in it.
Yeah, what I'm talking about, I, maybe I misphrased it as public safety, but it would involve both fire and police, so that's why I, I stated it. Potentially it wouldn't be limited to that. If there's a challenge from the water department, you know, and, and they have, they expressed the need for a, a solution, but are unable to, uh, potentially do all the footwork necessary to identify the best solution. The council is unable to do that. I mean, we're here, you know, once a month. I think this would be a good opportunity to connect the two.
Well, I'd be interested in seeing how you're going to set that up and what the charge is going to be, what charge, not money. Uh, what their responsibility is going to be and how it works. Um.
Because I think that would take a lot off your plate too. I know you get phone calls directly.
You know, guys, I don't get as many as y'all think I do. And the people that call me, I can generally deal with it. If it's a police issue, I call Mike. If it's a, if it's a fire issue, I call Blake. If it's a parks issue, I call Jeff. And, uh, I don't know that I want to create another level bureaucracy, but I'm open-minded to it.
Okay.
So, you give me the proposal. Y'all, y'all the ones going to vote on it. Y'all, y'all the ones going.
As a council, well, we can be called into session anytime to solve a problem. We don't have to wait till the meeting. That's the whole purpose of that council.
I'm trying to figure out, are, are, are there that many problems out there?
Yeah, I, I don't understand.
I'm attempting to be proactive, because if you look at other cities, Watertown's structure is not, does not coincide with what I've seen other cities. Um, and, and potentially it's a population thing. Maybe we haven't reached a point yet to where it'll be necessary. Ultimately, at some point we may. And it may not be as beneficial initially, just because of the amount of volume and the types of problems. But as we continue to grow, there are inevitably things that will occur that will tax the city council beyond its resource capability. And that's why these committees exist. That's why this level of government is set up in all of these other different towns. So I would be happy to reach out to some of these other towns and find out the charge of their committees and how they're put up.
Get us some information.
Okay. And then.
Please, please, I'm not just saying it. Get us some.
Sure, yeah, because I, I just think it would help us overall. And then the, the last item I wanted to discuss is the, uh, water, um, from the fire hydrants.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for me, the question, um, about people accessing, untrained personnel accessing a fire hydrant that's unmeasured is a challenge. Um, because I think we're at a certain level of risk. If an untrained personnel taps a fire hydrant and somehow gets injured, that comes back to us as a council, as a city. And so I wanted to find out if we could take measures to put a process around that, potentially adding one of those counters that ma, that measures the actual gallons, setting up particular times of the day that, or certain days or whatever that that takes place, and having some sort of monitoring system. Because one of the downsides is if I don't pay my water bill, I'm charged a reconnection fee.
Mm-hmm.
If someone else doesn't pay their water bill and they're tapping a hydrant, how are they, how is that revoked? How are they, how do we recoup the reconnection or whatever penalty fees are necessary?
They'll lose their privilege. We don't have the five people doing it. And guys, we've been doing this for forty years.
Correct me if I'm wrong, don't they pay a monthly?
They do. They pay a monthly.
They're paying to do that.
Yeah.
But, but do you go to their house and take their key if they don't pay?
They're.
You see what I'm saying? What's the, how do we, how do we balance that?
Well, I don't know. We've had that problem. Have we had a problem with somebody not paying?
I don't think at the moment you have enough people, like you said, it's the same people have been doing it for, for a long time. And I don't think it's a problem right now to where there's so many people trying to do that, that it's a.
But is there, then is there a process that anybody else that wants to do it can apply for?
I think you could just.
Come through here.
Yeah, come to the city hall and say, hey.
Yeah.
Looks like we're trying to create a problem that we don't have.
The people that are getting this historically have been people that don't have wells uh, or that during times of drought their wells go dry. Uh, but we've got, I think I gave y'all copies of everybody that we have the agreement with. It's, it's no more than five, maybe just be four. But, uh, you know, if they don't pay, I mean, I look at a list every month of people who don't pay and we make an effort to get them to pay. We call, we, we send Bob out and everything. We don't want to cut anybody off. But if these people, we're doing them a favor, if they don't pay, we'll cut them off immediately. I don't have a problem with that.
They're going to lose that.
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's just a couple of things. And as far as creating a problem that doesn't exist, you're right, until someone's injured and we end up paying a lawsuit. Untrained personnel, in fact, I think it's illegal in the state of Tennessee for untrained personnel to tap a fire hydrant.
When I work in construction, we've rented and used meters from local facilities, Metro Nashville, Lebanon, Mount Juliet, and typically you pay a deposit and they give you a a water meter to tap onto a fire hydrant. And they let you use it, but you pay a deposit and one of those water meters with tech dollars, which, you know, six, eight, ten thousand dollars are really expensive. But that's an expensive topic to put in one of those on.
Yeah, and I was just coming up with ideas.
We weren't regulating it anyway. As part of one of that meter, we put it on a fire hydrant to use it.
Yourself?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, I, I'll look up the statute, because I, I was reading it and that concerned me. I mean, for liability purposes.
Well, we're saying two different things though. You're saying liability, you're saying measure the water flow.
Well, that's what the, you know, water department's pay us, because it's got, you build, you know, you guys are building, like, you know, they're filling up the tank and it has six amount of gallons and it's how much they use, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think to the liability thing, I think if you're worried about there being a liability, I mean, maybe you can, these four people just say, can you sign this waiver that says we're not liable? I mean, I think it would be that simple.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I, I just want to make sure we're not on the hook.
Do we, do we already have it on there?
I'm not sure what is this, about the waiver driving.
Not even. I just took those out, getting ready for this meeting and set them in my forward office. I'll go back and look and see if we can fix it.
I'm sure that's.
Yeah, if we don't have the waiver, we do need to get it removed out of it.
Okay.
Definitely the waiver.
Okay. That's all we have. Thank you. All right. Good. Kayla?
I've got a few other people ask about city ordinance again. I have them, but giving them out to everyone is hard. They want a place to put up city ordinances, so that's.
Yeah, we can update you on that. Uh, our, uh, remake or the redo of them are, is in, two hundred and some odd pages.
Yeah.
And they're waiting on us to proof them and, and get them back and then we can put them on the website. Yeah.
Okay, so a few more people ask.
I mean, was it two hundred and eighty-four pages that we got to look at?
I sent an email earlier today, it's morning, it's up there on that as well.
Okay. All right.
It wasn't for me. I just, you know, people ask.
Sure.
They don't know what else to ask. And I don't know, I didn't know what else to ask either, so.
Well, we need to get it on the website.
They just want a whole thing to do to see what they're actually, is they're doing wrong or not doing wrong, or, yeah.
Okay, we can get that.
So it's hard to follow all.
Yeah. This is what we need to review.
Proofreading.
Yes, we need to prove.
We just want to have the deadline tomorrow, right?
What are you looking to be for?
I'm just saying.
Oh.
After you get done.
I know.
Right. Put that with a hazard mitigation plan.
We'll look at it. What else you got?
That's all for me.
And then after it's, uh, approved and followed, uh, you'll be able to back online again.
Yeah. Do we have to do?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Do we have to do a resolution saying we approve that? Don't they, don't, they usually want us to?
It says after reading the, she said, in order to adopt a five verse, that we must follow the state law provisions. And they would send that to us after we finish that and say, that's.
Okay. All right, I'll look at it. Laura?
That's fine, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, like reading the mitigation plan.
Um, the C M, it was saying, what, the big two hundred and seventeen page thing we had today, I read, skipped through some of it. And I did have a question about our city employees being trained in the proper equipment. It, it recommended in there that they're trained for Westport. I mean, Bob's been doing this for a long time. Bob knows what he's doing. It was just a recommendation and not a requirement, if I read that right.
I haven't read it, Laura, so I don't feel comfortable.
I, I feel like it was just a recommendation, but if something were to come up when we go through it, then I would hope to read it periodically. Uh, I want to make sure, of course, Bob, I know we can always give him monetary, what he needs or what all they say on me. But like you said earlier, I want him to have that good safe environment, have the equipment they need that will keep, make them happier. Sometimes it's not always the money in the pocket. Um, so.
Well, that's true. But we do need, I, I will tell you that my goal in presenting our budget to you this time will be again to find more money for employees.
Yes.
Uh, so, and I'm, so the more I can save in the next three months, the better I could do.
So my next thing is, I know last week, last month, we talked about the sign upfront. So I had said that I was going to do some more research, uh, with, um, the Boy Scouts. And after looking at that and the companies around and talking to the constituents, everyone I talked to absolutely is for the sign. They're for the thirty-five hundred, thirty-five thousand dollars. Like they, the Boy Scouts was not the route that I think that we needed to go. So with that being said, I feel comfortable moving forward with the sign, whether it be next fiscal year or not.
Okay. You making a motion?
I will make a motion that we move forward with the sign proposed.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, discussion, comments, questions? I think the sign will be beneficial. And I think you were talking about a while ago of how to notify the community. There are a lot of things we can notify the community on, uh, with that sign. But it is a lot of money. I'll.
It is, and I talked to quite a few people from different areas in this town and was quite surprised, honestly, by the people that supported it. The, the men, they liked the idea of communication, fixing our sewer, fixing our roads. They, those are good plan.
Okay. Questions, comments, statements?
Um, just a curiosity though, I'm, like I said before, I'm not against the sign, but if we had thirty-five thousand extra dollars spent, should we not spend it on roads that we don't have the money to spend right now?
I mentioned that and someone else brought to my attention, well, y'all already have that planned out budget-wise.
But that's a grant that won't pay for all of it. So you still have to come up with the rest.
And we just had someone bring up the sidewalk issue as well, so I think, to me, I think sidewalks are more important than a sign.
And we need a sign. I just don't think we need that sign.
Now.
Can I ask a question? Um, with the sign, can, I'm sorry.
Uh, kind of what's in front of, it's, it would be electronic sign with saying, we have my long works upcoming this week. We had the fish fry this weekend, our meeting's at five-thirty on Wednesday instead of at six on Tuesday. Just can you use the events, things like that. And when this building is not, it's not labeled city hall, like no one knows that this is city hall. So I agree with.
You're talking about one sign, one digital sign?
Mm-hmm.
For how much?
Thirty-five thousand dollars.
I've been in the sign industry.
I've been in the sign industry for thirty years, so I, if I want to give any sign for me, I would love to help you out with that.
That's, you remember a digital sign?
Do you know the sign that's in front of First Baptist Church?
Yeah.
It's like that, correct?
Similar to that sign.
Yeah.
But the only difference was the one that was presented to us had a brick base in columns on the side of the verses, the Christian church, which is basically, I don't know.
Do you, you guys don't have the specifications for the, uh, dot, or, or dock pitch or the lettering on that? With most of those L A D module signs, they're, they're scaled by price for the dock pitch. So if you don't get to write dock pitch and you want to put more words or lines, you won't be able to, nobody's going to be able to read it. So it's important that that be nailed down correctly, otherwise our records just look like gibberish when people want, when you want to put a message out to the city center and then maybe they require more text. But it's important to make sure that that's, and that's displayed properly. And the issue with that is the dock pitch is determined, determines the price. Because the matrix is for the modules that go inside those panels. And you play a twelve by twelve or thirteen by eighteen. And you, the smaller the pitch, the more money, because you get more, more L A D diodes in that sign.
And I think the proposal we had.
Yeah, I, I spent quite a bit of time with them. And yes, it's got a, it doesn't do any good to say it out there and people not be able to read it. But what I was looking for was something nice that people, that's very usable, that people can, can read. Yeah. So I feel comfortable with what's being proposed now. Further questions, comments, discussion? All right, we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You vote nigh against or for?
I'm against. Jury is voting.
Okay, and everybody on this side's against? Okay. All right.
You just said we're running out of money for this budget. We got to be careful what we spend the next three months.
And I think so.
Guys, this is something that I've been talking about for six months. And I have brought it to you. I have met with these people and we've got the money to do the same. And I have brought it to you, I have met with these people, and we've got the money to do the same. But to think that $35,000 is going to fix the sidewalks in this town is a joke.
Me at all.
Yeah. And then we still got to determine if we own the sidewalks or not. If we don't, we got to get the right of way.
Well, the ownership, on sidewalks, I agree, the ownership, I think, is the big issue there.
Okay.
I'm not saying it's the sign on the sidewalks. I'm just saying there's other things that $35,000 could go towards that I feel are more important. And if you want a sign that says it's a City Hall, I think that's fine, I get that. But I don't see $35,000 need for it to say City Hall. That's all of mine, all I'm saying.
I kind of thought that too. I would say, please go talk to your constituents.
And I have, and mine...
I was very surprised with the people that actually were for the sign than against the sign.
See, all mine are against, but it's, I mean, just differences.
Right.
People, so...
Mayor?
Yes?
You might have a leadership, Wilson, when they do their project. That might be something that they...
How can someone from Watertown own leadership, Wilson?
Normally, somebody every time. But the one that we did for the playground wasn't, wasn't even hired from Watertown, isn't that the leadership? Because they split them up. They, or they did that, they split them up and both those people weren't anybody's work. And they took that project on to help us, so I mean, and did the fundraising, and they raised a lot of money for it, so...
I have a meeting with Dory, actually, in two weeks, so I'll be happy to meet up with her.
Okay, do you have anything else coming up?
No, sir, I'm busy.
Okay, Steve?
Actually, I've got a little good news.
Good.
You're aware of this, and everybody may know that the Leaven and Allen Mall is closing at the end of this month.
Yep.
There will be no more stores open. I have been in conversations with Mr. Hugh Graham, who's the facilities manager up there. And Watertown has been given the opportunity to get free the six-foot park benches and the metal trash can canister holders that are decorative. And we can, I've been told, we can have as many as we want to haul off. And I think those will become useful with our upcoming projects with turntables. Maybe having some trash can things in the park that aren't a rubber-made tub chained to a telephone pole that's what you can pour concrete and now you can dig into the ground. But we are able to start picking those up starting April 15.
Okay. We need, probably need to make a motion to accept that contribution.
Well, I'm...
You've worked it. You made it.
I'll make that motion if we accept the donation that's been offered to us by the Leaven and Allen Mall for trash cans and park bench.
Okay, discussion?
Do you need to decide how many to want?
How are we holding here?
I got a truck.
Y'all got a truck.
My understanding, there's in the neighborhood of 35 to 50 of each.
Yeah, there's a bunch there.
If we aren't obligated to take them all, we have been offered to take as many as we choose.
Why wouldn't we take them all? We've got plenty of places we can save them up.
I don't know why we wouldn't. The biggest thing with taking them all is where we're going to store them at till we actually figure out where we're going to put them. But like I said, it's coming up April 15th, we have the opportunity to go get this...
The old City Hall.
I say take them all, between the parks and around the town later.
Yeah, I said take them all, too.
We store them in the area where Bob's area is behind it. Is that where they're storing?
Yeah, we can put...
Bob's been cleaning that up.
We get them, we can put them, we set them up some places. Yeah. So, all right, ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. What else you got, Steve?
That's all, okay.
That's good. That's a good project. I'm glad it's come to fruition. Kyle?
I've got one thing on that. When we've paved the streets, I would like to see the city of Watertown, if we have the money, to buy a roller and put hot mix down and put the streets back just like the original instead of throwing some cold mix in and just have to climb in and out of those. We can do that as a small roller and a prater and the roller...
We used to have a roller.
We, we, we didn't use it.
Well, we used it some, but...
Yeah, we didn't use it much.
Yeah, we used to have a roller, but we bought it surplus. It wasn't, it wasn't the greatest piece of...
Well, we need one to repair our streets like it's supposed to be done.
Okay. All right, we'll take a look at it. Is that it? All right, need one more motion?
Make a motion to the general.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Good to see you all. Have a good evening. Thank you.